Good evening to everybody. I call the order of this meeting of the Town of Vista Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, and the time is 7:02 PM. Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Fay?
Yeah.
Let's get going.
On. Let's see, can you hear us?
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Kinga?
Here.
Trusty Jenkins?
Here.
Trusty Lecretse?
Here.
Trusty Row?
Here.
Trusty Switzer?
Yeah.
We are doing, ma'am, the product, the project relations. The project relations. And we're in so far as that. And so the revolver. All. As you came in tonight, there was a sign up seat on the counter. In case you'd like to make any comments during our public comment period. And that would primarily be for comments that don't deal with the public hearing that we have. So, and then Paula will collect those sign-ins. So, please silence your cell phones. And so we'll move on to the agenda. An agenda for this evening. Does anybody have any discussion of the agenda or changes proposed? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Make a motion to approve. I think. We could be, wisher. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the consent agenda. Which, if you have anything that you feel should be a separate discussion with the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion of the consent agenda?
I have a question. Minutes from the third president are one. They're popular with them. There's a lot of months at a time.
I think the reason that happens is that they haven't fully approved their own minutes. And then they, once they're approved by the commission, then they get into our consent agenda. Is that right? Is that how that happens?
They, the advisor boards and the commissions must approve their minutes before they come for the board. Typically, we do bring them in more sequential, not both together. I'm not quite sure what happened on this one.
It's a continual effort. We will continue to pursue to get them to you more regularly.
Yeah, because some of them got pretty old. Let's go back as far as February.
Cool stuff in there. It'd be nice to know soon.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move.
You can mark. A second.
I think.
Jacob, Inspector? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we will receive public comment if anyone is here to speak to us. And this is a time for you to comment on various things, but it's not a question and answer period. It's just leave the comments. So, Lisa, Lisa Lamb. Would you like to start with your name? You have three minutes. Welcome. Yeah, I think we're coming.
So actually live out of the county.
It's okay.
Or out of the town, but we are currently leasing one of the town's buildings.
We'd like your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My address.
Minutes, yeah.
Eight, eight, one, Beest of Verde. Um, you know, this stuff. Eight, one, two, one, one. And the property that we're currently leasing is located at the three, four, three US Highway 24 South. The name of Lima Chapel. Um, I just wanted to not pick up too much time because we've been, that seems like a long time. But, um, I overheard that you are all going to be at a conference or training of some sort. We are having our official ribbon cutting next Wednesday. I'm representing, I'm the director of Shining Mountains Montessori School. And we are in our eighth week of operation. So, most of you, if not all of you, will not be in attendance. But, uh, just like to throw this little flyer and say thank you so much for pressing up with, I would argue the oldest building in town, I believe, the courthouse that's celebrating its 40th year. I'm sorry, 140th year, yeah, 40th year. But we've, we've, with our collaboration and, um, we've been able to offer for the past eight weeks now. So we're going on eight weeks, some phenomenal childcare and jobs for 30 families. So we're really excited to have made that happen with your support and your trust in our maintaining this beautiful property. And we welcome you anytime, if you know about your super. It has turned into a beautiful, gorgeous little Montessori children's house for children ages two and a half to six. And we are actually licensed for ages up to 15. So on Fridays, for example, we'll be able to provide some aftercare for anyone, any of the children that are seeking additional childcare and summer camp. So just wanted to say thank you again and cheers. And if any of you would like to come and get a little glass of lemonade, you're welcome to. So on behalf of the board, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to, to more beautiful work together.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Mayor, item A.
Yes, please.
All right. I just want to recognize Lisa Lamb and her team. It's been a tremendous partnership, getting that building ready, like a little bit more than we all expected. But so many improvements have been made to that facility. It is a town-owned facility. And they really took to heart the desire to maintain the historical integrity. So the new ADA ramp and all of those things have been done, including window replacement with maintaining the historical integrity. It's probably one of our nicer facilities now, which doesn't say a whole lot, but it, uh, it has everything from new water heater to just new plumbing and, um, you know, definitely freshened up and it looks really good.
Assuming the sign is so welcoming. Going to town.
Good, very good, very good.
And also a lot of, if not most of the renovations, including the ADA ramp, were not financed by us, by the emergent and expansion grant. The renovations that part from your contribution was actually financed. We will continue to keep a key of beautiful.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to our business items.
Oh, excuse me, mayor. We had someone, Alan Matlos, online. He would like to speak.
And, and Mike will have him. He's going to be a speaker for item A.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, you can go ahead with item A. This has to do with the new construction of our new police station. So the topic of item A has to do with financing of the project.
So we're about to get this started and we do have some guests on the, on the meeting as well that will share with you an overview of the financing package that we put together before the renovation for the new police station. So that is item A. Item B is looking into the project itself, getting an update and the next steps on actual proceeding with construction and things. But item A, what we want to do is talk about the financing package here. And last summer, many of you will remember that we had Alan and his, and his team join us for a work session to discuss these financing concepts. They are with Stifle and we have been working with them since that time to put this together. And in the packet, Michelle did put together a quick overview of what's before you. And then the second memo is from Alan. And that outlines specifically the numbers, what the components are that are contained in the packet that we are asking the board to review and approve so that we can proceed with the rest of the project. So Alan, if, if you're willing and able, I'd ask for you to kind of give us an overview of, of the financing plan.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Alan Matlos. Yeah, so after, after the meeting we had almost a year ago, you know, we've been, we've been keeping in touch with the town. And, and earlier this year, or a few months ago, we solicited banks to see who could provide the best financing option for the town. Collegiate Peaks Bank provided that best option at the lowest interest rate. So we've been working with the town, the town attorney and butlers, the attorneys at Butler Snow to put together the financing documents. And the, the plan, just to let you know, is, is a lease purchase, which we talked about last year, where the, the town will lease the building to the bank. The town will make improvements to the building based on the money lent by the bank and then lease it back. So it's often called a lease, leaseback from the bank for a 15-year period. And the timing is really good for the town because we were able to get this rate locked in with the bank before interest rates really started going up. So we've seen a big increase on the last few days. And so that's, that's wonderful news for the town to borrow at these great terms. The, I mentioned in this, in this memo that there are three documents. One is the ordinance that's being considered. The other two are the lease and the site lease and the lease agreement. So the site lease is the document that where the town leases the building to the bank. And the lease agreement is where the town leases it back from the bank. You know, we're really good at making these documents really, really long and impossible to read. So we succeeded in this case. But the, the financing itself is, is quite straightforward in terms of how lease financing is done in Colorado. I worked on over a hundred of these and this is very standard. So I should give you some comfort that you're a good company. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And for the board awareness, we do have representatives from Collegiate Peaks Bank, our bond counsel from Butler Snow, who also is kind of the legal review for us. Town attorney also reviewed all of these documents as well. But if you have any questions about any of that, we do have people that can.
Is Jeff Parker on? Okay. Trustees, do you have any questions about what this arrangement is or how you feel about it? Whether you.
I think it's great for going to the local bank. If they, I'd like to see that. Yeah, besides that, I mean, I'd try to read most of it, but it seemed to be pretty straightforward. Police back thing, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. I, I do want to recognize that one thing that, that is different since we provided the, we, we put out a bid for the financing so that they can respond to us. To propose an interest rate. Sorry, Sue, I'm going to mute you real quick. Are you shaking? And so Collegiate Peaks did respond to that RFP and had kind of what we felt was the best proposal, local bank as well. On top of that, interest rates have gone up quite a bit since that process back in March, I believe it was. I believe we've landed at three, 3.25 or 3%, which rates right now are four to five easily. And so what they were interested in was trying to honor their, as close as possible. And I just want to recognize that I think we're still at a very good interest rate considering where things stand now.
Yeah, we saw that. We're thankful for the bank. So there are three parts to this agreement, but only one ordinance. So if you're ready to vote on the ordinance, I would be willing to take a motion to either pass the ordinance as it is, or amend it, or reject it.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance number 21 as presented.
Second.
I think we, we have a roll call vote on this.
Please.
Trusty Kyle?
Aye. Yes.
Trusty Hilton Kinga?
Aye.
Trusty Jenkins?
Yes.
Trusty Lecretse?
Yes.
Trusty Row?
Yes.
And Trusty Switzer?
Yes.
For all the hard work that went into this.
Thank you all.
So now we'll go on to item B. And item B has to do with the actual renovations that are to be made on the existing building that we've purchased for the police station. Joseph?
Yeah.
Joseph, please. On the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Trustees, very excited to be before you tonight with both a basic high-level update on what has been happening over the past number of months, as well as a pathway forward to actually commence work. So as the staff report that starts on page 90 of your packet outline, town staff and our lead architect, Riley Johnson Architecture, as well as our pre-construction manager, our commander at risk, MW Golden Constructors, we've all been working through since January, really, on developing construction documents and fully detailed drawings for how the existing building that has been valued home furnishings for the past 20 years. Now that building will become our new police station. A really brief reminder that in 2020, World Architecture worked with a special committee convened by the town staff and by the trustees and said that the current police station, which is in about a 2,300 square foot building, needed at least 8,400 square feet in order to operate in not only a safe manner for the officers and employees, but also in a manner that encourages compliance with things like evidence storage, as well as being able to service our community's safety needs. So fast forward through all of the amazing planning and work that has gone through to today, we're looking at being able to build a 10,800 square foot police station. What I've been starting to call the forever home, right, of our police station. No one can see the future, but this station is placed at a level which will not only accommodate our current department, but allow for growth over the coming years as our community continues to grow. So I couldn't be more excited and confident that this project is not a today's solution. It is a today's solution and a tomorrow's solution, which I think everyone should feel good about. That being said, we're in a relatively good environment in construction right now. So when that world needs assessment was done, there was a very basic cost estimate thrown out at about $280 a square foot for a renovation project, should we be able to find an existing building. That's a number that we started to use as we started to look at building a budget for this project. As you can see on page 91, our budget now with fully completed drawings and firm pricing and bids sits for the total project, including acquisition, at around $535 square foot. So we have experienced escalation to say the least. Now, I am, I am confident in the pricing that we do have. It's basically a $4 million contract that the board might consider at a future date for the construction. That does include 8% contingencies, including various allowances for items that have already started to come down in cost. So we are very hopeful that this is a very accurate number. All of this is before you tonight, and it was written at a time and we present it to you at a time now. It's going to be denied. So the staff report was written to anticipate, we still might not know, and presented two different scenarios for you to consider. Staff is recommending that we talk about scenario one. This scenario is the one which acknowledges we do not know about DOLA, and yet we want to leave the door open for if we do get a DOLA award. As you remember from the, from the staff report, we cannot spend or contract dollars that we, prior to a contract execution with DOLA. So that's to say that we would not be able to enter into our full construction contract today and then receive a DOLA award tomorrow. We have to receive the DOLA award, go under contract for that grant, and then execute the corresponding bulk amount of our construction contract. So therefore, scenario one, which I believe is on, I want to page 92, puts forward what we're calling a forward contract. It's an initial contract legally described as exhibit A2 for existing pre-construction contract. This is about a $1 million, $960,000 contract that would allow MW Golden Constructors to mobilize, start demolition, start bringing in key subcontractors to begin underground plumbing work, for example, as well as secure long lead time items like our air handling equipment. The idea here is that everything else is ready to go. If the only reason we're waiting is because we're waiting for a DOLA award, we might see further escalation in price or further uncertainty the longer we wait. So we bring this forward contract to you in hopes that you might consider executing the smaller initial contract to allow work to get started. Then, once we know what DOLA is doing, if we receive an award, that's wonderful, we'll wait till a grant or contract. If we do not receive an award, we will also come back before you for the full, full contract amount. So the, the request before you at the bottom of page 92 is to adopt resolution 45, which would authorize the town administrator to execute exhibit A2 and exhibit B with MW Golden Constructors. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. We also have Philip and Jeff on the line to answer any.
What does it actually say? Does it say A2 anywhere on page 93?
So the idea would be that page 94 is the exhibit would be.
Okay.
Would be where we insert exhibit A2. So.
Scenario one.
Yeah, scenario one, exhibit A2 and exhibit B. So the idea is that the resolution will only have one exhibit A. That exhibit A will have attached to it exhibit A2 from the AIA documents and exhibit B. I know it's rather.
So that, does that have to be within the motion that, that addition that you just talked about, Joseph? Or is that just exhibit A is good enough?
I think for the motion, it would be great to clarify that the A, we can say AIA exhibit A2 is the one that you're approving, but it's a resolution of 45.
But basically giving, we're waiting to hear back from DOLA. Once we do, it gives Philip the power to go boom?
We would actually, we would actually sign off on this A2 now. So that we can get moving on those other items Joseph pointed out. And then once we know about DOLA, we can enter into contract with them. And then we bring the rest of the contract back that, for the full scope.
Okay.
That's fine.
By the way, we will bring you back. Yeah, the rest.
Go ahead. I was going to say, and when I read it in here, maybe it's the first, um, maybe it was A, but to start everything, was that supposed to be next year? That we're, we're.
Ground will break on July 11th. We'll be exiting this, should we got those.
That's right, okay.
And we do anticipate a nine months construction window. So we would, we would hope to be finished by April 11th, 2023.
So even if costs do drop, which I know lumber is coming down a little bit, but like, it's not like we're waiting for months to get this going. So it's won't drop that much, I guess.
Attorney Parker has popped up. Hi, Jeff.
I've actually been here the whole time. I, I don't know why, I just jumped up there. I just put my mute off, but happy to answer any questions if you have any, so.
All right, thank you.
I just saw him talk, so I think.
Trustees Swisher, did you?
I think it's important to go with scenario one and move forward with the contract because building costs might not necessarily go down. And if they're increasing like they have been in the past, the longer you wait to build something, the more expensive it costs. So I think we should move forward as quickly as possible. And it still allows us to use the DOLA grants if we receive it. So I think it's.
Thank you. Yeah.
So costs have gone up 1.3 million since we, since we approved it. That's a big chunk. Yeah, the harder thing for me to wrap my head around, I wish the future BB would be paying for this. You know, go from 4.4 million to five, almost 5.8 million. Big lot. So I, you know, I really hope to see a lot of more support in the community for that large, large sum.
And with this arrangement, the contractor agrees to take the risk for further increases in the cost.
Okay.
So this, this is our maximum cost and it includes an 8% contingency that we would potentially get that back if, if costs did come down, right?
And there are a number of other line items, even though the full contract will be a guaranteed maximum price, as you mentioned. There are a number of other line items that, that only get drawn with proper documentation that they were actually spent. But so one example might be snow removal. There's a line item for snow removal. We don't get a lot of snow over the winter. We will also save that money, right? It's a very small amount of money compared to the whole project, but there are a number of line items like that. So the idea behind the GMP, once the full contract and full scope is executed, is that we do have certainty. Obviously, that doesn't cover if we change our minds on something, if we need to change the scope, or if something is unearthed, you know, underground vaults that none of us knew. That would also affect the cost.
Probably all the water.
Yeah.
Anybody else have comments? So is there a motion? We don't have a motion on this yet, right? Number 45, resolution number 45.
Mayor, real quick, I just, I'll just want to highlight that while the cost from this side have gone up, we did realize benefit that's on that side a little bit, not quite to the same amount, but on the fire station. I would say that proceeds we received from that were quite a bit higher than we originally had planned on. So that was good to see. And I would say the same for the sale of the building. So it is a big number. It's something we've been working on quite a bit. Uh, it is a big number. It's something we've been working on quite a bit. Um, to make sure it's a viable financial plan for the town over the course of the financing. Um, uh, that we just approved, but the um. Uh, the fact is, because of the proceeds from the fire station and building lots, our fund balance is in really, really good shape. And Michelle has provided um a little bit more detail in her Q one report. Kind of show what's, what the projected fund balances are with some of these things taken into consideration. So. I think town still is in a good flexible spot uh for other projects, maybe not at this magnitude. But uh, I think we're still good financially.
Ten. I'd like for the motion to include um the reference to AIA exhibit A two.
So I would like to make motion to adopt resolution number forty-five to authorize the. Town administrator to execute the um scenario one forward contract exhibit A two. And exhibit B.
Thank you. So um Swisher, Lucrezzi. Do we have a roll call on this also?
Please.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrezzi.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Hinga Hill. Excuse me, Hill, Hinga, got that backwards. Did you vote?
Yes, and yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
The most impressive. So um, thank you. There's a lot of, a lot of work to get to that point. But now we start taking.
Yeah. And I have a ribbon cutting something or not a ribbon kind of done, some kind of shovel or something, right? We gotta do.
Yeah, we gotta do.
Yeah. More to call it a siren or something. Yeah.
Okay, well now it's my pleasure to welcome our Taffey County Emergency Manager, Rick Atkins. He's going to talk about the Taffey County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Good evening. Um, I've met most of you, if not, um. I am the emergency manager for the entire county. Uh, Taffey, not just the county government. I'm your emergency manager also. Just want to make sure you, you know that. What we're talking about here is the. Multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The multi-jurisdictional, multi-jurisdictional part of it is that the three municipalities and the county government. In order to receive hazard mitigation funds from FEMA, we're required to have a plan, how to use those. What, you know, and part of that is projects, if we request project funding, we have to have those projects in, in plan also. So the planning for this actually started about four or five years ago, when we applied for grants from FEMA to help write the plan. Um, it took a while to get that approved, um like it does all the time. But about a year and a half ago, we did our kickoff meeting with the planning committee. And it's just not those four jurisdictions. It's all of our um special districts, our schools, our fire. Um, a lot of our um associations that participated in the plan. So once we got the planning committee um identified, then we did uh what was called a hazard. I invent inventory. We looked at what hazards does our county face. We, we uh researched history, um different type of events that have occurred. We pushed out for public input. During that time period also. That was our biggest portion is identifying the hazard. The second part was ranking those hazards. You know, was it a high hazard? Was it a medium hazard? Was it a low hazard? And each jurisdiction had that opportunity to, to make that decision themselves. We also, at that point. Were required by FEMA that any high hazard or medium hazard, we have to come up with mitigation strategies. Some projects to uh to try to mitigate that hazard from occurring. And which we did. Each jurisdiction had to come up with some. Um, new ones, we evaluated the previous ones from the, the, the previous plan. And that previous plan, we have to update every five years. Um, so it's an ongoing process. So, once we got all of the projects in. Um, we sent it to the planning committee for their review and approval. Um, Philip was on the committee plus, like I said, representatives from all the jurisdictions, all of the emergency response agencies. Once we got it approved from them, we submitted it to the state. We had it submitted a couple of times and that's normal. They always have changes in there. So that we got final approval from the state uh early this spring. And once we did that, we pushed it to FEMA Region Eight in Denver. And they gave us tentative approval pending adoption by the four jurisdictions. So that's why we're here to get your support for the plan. Um, and the support part is that you have mitigation strategies, you know, we want your support to be able to start working on those strategies. To try to mitigate some of the, especially in this area, the flood hazards, the wildfire hazards, working on emergency evacuation planning. For the community, et cetera. So I appreciate you putting it on the uh. Um, the agenda and just which uh you would uh adopt this plan.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you able to describe what was updated in the plan? Like, are there any significant changes or?
We, we added quite a few more hazards that we didn't have before. Um, some of those include climate changes. We added um cybersecurity as well. Some of the more man-made hazardous materials. Because of all the transportation incidents that occur, it's not a natural hazard. So FEMA doesn't care about it, but we care about it. We want to look at ways we can keep our community safe. Um, we also added a probably. Thirty to forty more projects, mitigation strategies to work on throughout the county.
Thank you.
Our, ours focused a lot on flooding and wildfire. Not, not a big surprise there, but we look, we identified our bridges. Um, our source water, air, uh, source water protection area and, and fire concerns that from, from that area. Uh, and then also transportation. So as our main routes start to get more bought down. Are, there's probably a need at some point in the future for alternative routes, especially during emergencies. So things like that. Where the main ones I can recall that we added to the.
Toxic spills, was that part of it?
That's, yeah, as Rich pointed out, the toxic, that was somewhat new. That was not in the natural list before, but I think man-made. Ones like that were added. Um, that is something that we have seen. Um, and our fire, fire protection district does have to deal with from time to time.
So what we did on that, one of the projects was, you know, to, to um. Increase our plan for hazardous material spills, especially into the Arkansas or on, on our main highways and stuff. And what the plan is of dicking and damming, making notification downstream. To a lot of the communities that have intakes for their water. So those are the type of things, even though it's a mitigation plan, you know, it's worth a lot of, of other planning. As projects.
Good. Would anyone like to make a motion to um? We're, we're noting our potential approval or our approval of the plan.
I'll make the motion to approve. Resolution number forty-six, series twenty-two. Resolution of the board trustees for the town of Univista, Colorado, adopting the JF County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Twenty-two through twenty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
So Lucrezzi Swisher. Sorry, Sue, you're on a long distance.
Big thing to, to get into, so.
Yeah.
One of the plans I'll be bringing forward over the next, probably six months.
Okay, all in favor?
Spread it out so we don't have to read four hundred and eighty. Back, yeah.
We're all in favor of casting a rose.
Good job.
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the rest. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, and I apologize for the length of it, but it's a standard that FIBA requires. So. That's why it's in there that long. Our emergency operation plan that I'll be bringing forth to you probably early fall is only like thirty pages.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, um, so now we're ready to move on to business item D. And we have representative of the Boys and Girls Club, Dustin, I think you're their facilities development manager, is that what?
Facilities Chair.
Okay.
Boys and Girls Chair, also a volunteer board member, Boys and Girls Club as well. Um, so and I want to say thank you um to town trustees, our mayor, um town planning, Philip Puckett. For the partnership that we have in this endeavor. And just thank you for the time to provide an update to you.
Thank you.
My first slide here, next slide, I apologize.
All right, all right.
Yeah, this is the timeline of the project to date that I will go over in the next few slides. Uh, this speaks to our strategic plan. We began in twenty seventeen, uh meetings with town began in twenty eighteen. The twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, the development of the conceptual plan and um how we hired a firm that is um presenting. At the end of twenty twenty-one, we signed an MOU with town. And in twenty twenty-two, we just recently picked off our capital planning. Meeting. And in twenty twenty-three, at the end of the year, we plan on breaking ground. With next slide. Despite speaks to our strategic plan, and in December twenty seventeen, our board of directors went through a strategic planning exercise. One of the outcomes is the initiative to create a home for our Boys and Girls Club. Presently, we operate out of the hallway and gym at the middle school, and though we're grateful for this space. And we realized uh we had to create a home for the Boys and Girls Club. So the level of programming uh that our kids and our club members deserve could be achieved. We believe our environments play a large part in the success of our mission, and the Boys and Girls Club's mission is to inspire and enable all young people, especially those of us. Especially those who need us most, to reach our full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. Our vision is to provide a world-class club experience that assures success within reach of every young person who enters our doors. Next slide. So in twenty eighteen, a conversation started with the town of BB, and after working together on finding a possible. Site, we landed on the southwest corner of block twenty-five. This is a page out of the town campus master plan as proposed by the students of CU Denver. And we're down there in that southwest corner, which led to our next slide with town. A memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the subject parcel with town to ground lease. So thank you, Philip Puckett. Thank you, town attorney Jeff. Thank you trustees for that agreement. Thank you, Casey Martin, for helping us on our next slide. Uh, so we aim to provide a facility where children can be educated, where they and their parents are supportive. A place where they can gather, feel safe, be kids, and a place where they can be nourished, a place to play. Next slide. We desire to work with the kids. We can even get large donors and strategic partners to design a place that would be exciting, dynamic, safe, bright, and fun. Next slide. Our design process included our architect, Jeff Urban, with SDG Designs, meeting with the club members first. So that they could design, so the design club could be inspired by them directly. We also saw these meetings as a programming opportunity for the kids, so that they could see part of how the architectural design process can work. Here is a photo from one of our community input sessions. Uh, next slide, I apologize. Uh, here is a photo from one of our community input sessions. We gathered a lot of feedback, incorporated all that we could from the tweet. Slide. And here is where the site plan landed. And you can see from a bird's eye view, the site plan overlaid on an aerial photo of block twenty-five. You can see that we envisioned walkability through the club from the school and a corridor through the center of the block is inspired by the proposed community campus master plan image reviewed earlier. The solar panels on the roof there were added after feedback from our community meetings with adults. Next slide. This is my favorite image of the club. It's a photorealistic image that was donated to, donated to us via connection of Jeff Urban, our architect. This was made by MAQE, an international 3D rendering service provider. Great image. But. Here we have several elevations of the subject that helped to visualize the project. Um, render A up there where it says the club and we may have some sign ordinance issues to work through there. We're looking south on Evans Street, this little sidewalk on the back of the club there, that's the north-facing wall of the club and the west-facing wall looking towards the mountains. We want. You can see the windows there. We want light to come into that space as much as possible. Um, render B there, just looking from the other end of that sidewalk at the front of the building there from the community center to well. Render C is uh that southwest corner of Evans and Cedar Street. You're looking at the music. Theater area with the roll-up sliding door so that we can achieve indoor-outdoor functionality event space and bring in tons of natural light into the space. MD there is overlooking the bike rack and playground structure, looking into the two roll-up doors of the gym space. The administrative office there and brick, and those last two at the bottom are somewhat self-explanatory, the front of the building. An aerial image, next slide. This is a render of the inside from the perspective of being in the game room. You can see a young child there playing, a young man behind the health desk. That brick is the administrative section and there's less of their entrances. Next. The next few slides are conceptual and provide the aim. For the face, new remote colors and how they correspond to design goals. Uh, we wanted places that cultivate community, uh inside-outdoor places. We wanted to bring in natural light. We wanted. Transparency. We want a place for informal meetings and connections to occur. And areas that we believe that inspire creativity and trust. Place where nourishment can be provided and snacks and meals for kids. Next slide. Here we kind of zoom in on the last side slide and you see the purple area shaded and these are areas to inspire creativity and to be gathering places. We're seeing the game room, the team center, and the music theater spaces there. From purple, next slide. Here we can see highlighted in orange, the multipurpose room, the health desk. By the stairwell and the administrative offices with the secured permission, permission in terms of. Also highlighted yellow there is the kitchen. We can provide nourishment for kids. Next slide. Here we have highlighted in green, a place to cultivate community, a place for natural light and inside-outside design feature, a light well, if you will. Uh, and that's the rock climbing space there on the left side and then over in the stairwell, we kind of envision light coming into that space as well. Next slide. So lastly, have these particular slides. Um. This slide highlights in green the gym and the rock climbing space where we believe a great deal of community cultivating will take place. These areas are also meant to have pass-through for natural light to enter this space. And here we have the indoor render of the gym. I like this a lot, this. But this great deal of excitement around the gym and that walking track in particular as well. Um, and this is meant to speak to that vision. In the next slide. So here's our next steps. I saw you going over our next, that's where we're at now and where we're at. So right now, we're engaged with the town planning department and BV rec to reconcile site plan with the next slide. The recently received existing conditions, site map for block twenty-five. We will work, Boys and Girls Club, to ensure every, to ensure we have the best flat lot for the subject and town interest that we can. We will do this in partnership with town planning department, BV rec, town trustees, and our mayor. Next slide. Another step is to release our request for proposal to the list of architects that we feel are qualified to bid on the project. We will then go through an interview and scoring process to choose the best suited architect for phase two. The planning process will, we will achieve a set of buildable plans. We plan to do this very soon, as the conceptual plan will mature to a handoff stage here soon. And we have already finalized our request for proposal and our contractual service agreement. Thank you, Casey Martin, for helping us. Next slide. This slide here is our total cost budget estimated. And I share your surprise with how fast things move, we see it all the time and what I do for looking. And I want to thank D S L Structures Incorporated for providing us with this cost estimate. Great value to us, we thank them for that. We also want to thank the town of Punta Vista, because you'll notice down there, that last line item, we have listed at a million bucks, even a little bit more than that actually, but. The donation by the city for that land, so thank you for that. And the numbers are real, and to talk about that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian, however, he's not here, so. Go to the next slide.
I always have your back. So I actually have take-home copies for everything, so. Philip, I'm going to run out shortly. Joseph can share his stuff, so.
These copies are much more detailed, you go into great links, all the community input we receive.
Yeah, they include our strategic plans, so that this is not. Numbers we just came up with the other night, but as Dustin said, we really appreciate John D S L and his team helping us with this very realistic estimate. And I have the fun job of raising this eight and a half million dollars, but many of you know our fantastic leadership team members. And I and our team and Dustin and I will lean very heavily on the Scott Urchels and Karen Dills of the world to help us raise this money. So the pyramid, which you see ahead of you is, again, we can, there's other ways to come up with this money, but this is our proposal. And this is what we're going to be shooting for. If someone would like to come up with two million dollars, they will have the naming rights to this incredible building. So if you'd like to leave tonight and let Dustin and I know that you'd like to pony up that two million, we'd be happy to sign up and. Put your name on this wonderful building. So again, it's a, it's an idea in terms of the numbers of how we could get to the eight and a half million. My hope and our team's hope is that we can do this as soon as possible, because we all know, the longer it starts, the later it starts, the more likely this number figure could go up. But again, as Dustin said, and. Her DSI, we think that's a very realistic, but we also feel and I feel in our team, our co-chairs Scott Urchell and Carol Laramie feel this is an achievable number. And this is a legacy building for our community. And I'm very confident, and our team is very confident, that we can raise these funds. A lot of our money right now is anonymous, but we are at one point seven-five million in our quiet phase without doing anything public. So. We hope to break ground in twenty-twenty-three, which is very important to us, as it is to all of you and all of our community members here. We know this, this is long, it's been needed for quite a while, and special thanks to Lisa and her team. For, as I've said, Joseph's heard me say this before, but it's like we went off to college and we came home, we asked our parents if we could still live in the basement. But we're not that the school district is a basement, it's a wonderful facility, and we're having a great summer. And we're averaging seventy-five kids a day, thanks to Lisa and Emily and their team. But we really hope that this building could be built as soon as possible. The sooner we raise the funds, the sooner it will be built, so. Questions for either of us?
I have a question, just because it came up with a public hearing as well for the carbonite program for the solar, because it's also came back from public hearings, so seven hundred thousand dollars here, is that just a straight cost? Or do you contribute or consider grants in there or anything else?
Yeah, and you're seeing the. You're referring to the budget is total cost, and what it does not include is gifts and time.
Gifts and time.
And that sort of thing, and our partnerships that we have with contractors, material providers, those sort of things. A great deal of this will be raised through gifts and time and materials that gets severely discounted, provided from local. Two examples that Blake Bennett and A C A are signed up to help us substantially, and. We're very pleased that Sangre Cristo is ready to work with us on sustainable energy and renewable energy sources. So again, I think it would realistically help us hold the line at this kind of number. It's going to take a lot of in time, but as Dustin said, we have some really, really wonderful, longtime supporters and investors who. Want to see this building happen and want to see it at a cost that's going to have a good ROI and effective number to stay at. So that's a real number, though, yeah, for the solar and electricals, yeah. We also have built-in labor increases and the contention seats.
Design questions for security, you know, unfortunately, we have to think about that. What's that look like for you guys as part of yourself?
Yeah, we have a, we have a safety committee, so we take it very seriously, Boys and Girls, we have a safety committee chair, someone like me who chairs that committee. They'll be involved in this process with us as well, and as I kind of mentioned earlier, we'll have a certain entrance as you move through the front of the building. There are challenges with security with this particular design, because it is meant to be an indoor-outdoor, highly functionable that way. Get cross-wins through the gym, have children try to get out of the gym into place spaces and those sorts of things. So it is a, it will continue to be an ongoing challenge, and it will be one that we have to continually address. Just like our school districts did. Didn't want to necessarily design a building that was. Be a vault, if you will. So that's our take on that. You will cut any odds as far as being the most modern and safe building, correct?
I think it looks great, and I'm excited to see that, and I've worked at a few Boys and Girls Clubs across the country, and. They're always a really important focal point of the community, and. I'm excited to see where this goes.
Thank you. So we appreciate everybody's support and Joseph's support. If we can dig that hole as soon as possible and put that picture on a placard in the hole, we think that'll help us move quick. Or faster at least.
So what happens in the building when it's not your programming hours?
So, yeah. We're, we're planning on envisioning that town rec is going to be using our facility during the day while the children are at school. And then when they're out of school, between certain hours, the club will have possession. So we'll have use agreements with town rec, we'll have use agreements for the parking lot as well, so that the community center can still function and have parking, and that sort of. We'll have shared agreed, shared use agreements. And we'll be working through it. Yeah, I mean, to make it cost-effective, we really do need it operating seven AM to nine PM, seven days a week, potentially. Yeah. And during the winter months, we envision people coming in there to walk on the walking track and get out of the weather, cold weather. So we see it functioning as an extension of the community center when the Boys and Girls Club is not in session. And we're saying from three to one hundred and three, the BV Community Health Center's investment of five hundred thousand dollars to go back to. Our community health needs and a legacy piece that helps, I mean, from, again, the senior pieces, as Dustin mentioned, that walking track is something we're working very hard to hang on to. For all the reasons.
That seems very popular.
It's very popular, and we think it will help all of us with fundraising, because it really serves from. From toddlers to families to kids to seniors walking when that wind is blowing every minute of the day except for right now. And also as a viewing spot, and we worked with our architects in terms of flexibility, when Dustin and I spoke with them the other day, said what a, what a great space to view. Like a ballgame, it's basketball games and volleyball games, be up in that walking track, so it'll have that function as well.
Other trustee questions or comments? Nice update.
Yeah, let us know if you need help to get into that goal.
We can do a little more.
Sure, we'll be back. We move through the planning process.
And in all referrals, we do, we do mention family foundations, if anyone has any recommendations. Willing and happy to meet with anyone, and there is a wonderful anonymous foundation that I'm going to be presenting this to within the next couple of weeks. My past for them is going to be, it's more than a million dollars.
But one brief note from. One of the next steps from our standpoint is working on creating a legal description of a lot that would be the basis for a ground lease. So that ground lease would come back before you all, as one of the next things you might see related to this project.
Yeah, I thought it was nice that the BV Health Center, people decided to give me five hundred thousand dollars. That was really nice, that was the old Oak Street clinic that I think had been owned by the town at one point. You know, way back at the beginning, I think. But anyway, they sold that building and wanted to do something good with the money and disbanded, so they gave five hundred thousand to them. Some to a scholarship and continuing education program at the hospital. And then some to the Hope, the Hope Group, which is the group that works against human trafficking.
Five hundred thousand, thank you, Livy, it's becoming kind of our asking price for, for big foundations and groups like Marty and Julie who decided to help us. But obviously, there'll be players, I think many of you know, we have to raise seventy percent of the funds before we can go to the foundations. But obviously, Daniel's, example, Daniel's Fund has been a great supporter of BV community for years, and. Owen McLeir, who's our rep and who I know very well and have known for about nine years, I told them we're going to be asking for no less than five hundred thousand dollars. As well, and they're very appreciative of the work that the town has done and their partnerships. Across the foundations, we'll put in some big chunks. See you in a couple of months with another update.
I would like to now open the public hearing related to item A. Item A has to do with. An application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license by Mianna BV LLC, doing business as bread and salt. So we will hear from the applicant. If they're here.
At first, that's America, yeah, we'll do stop report.
All right, great.
Quick overview, and then Michael can answer any questions that you have. On April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, Michael Ullala submitted a application for a hotel restaurant liquor license. And bread and salt, BV, the appropriate fees for the liquor license have been paid in the application, with that for public hearing on June fourteenth. The notice of the public hearing was published, the Chaffey County Times, and notice was posted on the property. Background text was submitted for Michael, and satisfactory results were received from the Colorado Bureau of Investigations and Federal Bureau of Investigations. Group of possession, now the premise has been provided, and the needs and desires provision of the neighborhood was included in the application packet. As stated in the memo, included in the board packets, Mr. Ullala was doing construction, replacing windows, doors, and walk, excuse me, walls. On the premise without the proper permits from the Chaffey County Building Department. As a result, a stop order was issued on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The building permit applications, none including app fees, were submitted to the town of Punta Vista Planning Department on June third. The town business, excuse me, town planning department's business practice is not to review permits until all application fees have been paid. As of two forty-five today, payment was received for the town building permit. Planning tech Doug Tart reviewed the building permit application and emailed it to the county building department. Doug contacted the county to verify if they received payment for the county permit, and they had not at the time of the phone conversation. And currently is taking the county two to five weeks to approve a building permit. The new liquor license, town and county department approval form, like his normal business process of ours, was given to the department heads to be reviewed and signed off on. Based on the lack of compliance for obtaining and being issued appropriate building permits. Police Chief Dean Morgan and Code Enforcement Officer Grant Ryan did not approve the request for liquor license. Planning Director Joseph Trifle noted on the form that the sale of alcohol is permitted at this location. And the planning department coordinated with the code enforcement and law enforcement before giving their approval. Chaffey County Fire Inspector Karen Johnson, environmental health, consumer protection specialist, Stephanie Nelson approved the request. They will also be doing a final inspection on the building once complete. Staff finds that the liquor license application meets the requirements outlined in the Colorado Liquor Code, and is complete. A decision is needed to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application for the hotel restaurant liquor license for bread and salt. The board may also choose to continue the public hearing to June twenty-eighth, depending on the building permit issue. If approving the liquor license with conditions, the board should consider the following. Payment and applicable building permit fees, certification of occupancy issued by the Chaffey County Development Services Department, certificate of occupancy issued by the town of Punta Vista. Final inspections and approval from Chaffey County Fire Protection District, and final inspections and approval from Chaffey County Environmental Health. The town clerk would hold the state town liquor license until all conditions have been met.
Thank you, Paul.
Hello, how are you? My name is Michael. I'm what?
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
We have the applicant.
No, I know, I'm the owner of the brand sold BV. We, we started Bread and Salt, I'm originally from Czech Republic. So back in old days, I just want to give you a quick update, you know, bread and salt back old days, when the, you know, the farmers and the kingdom and the queens and everything. Was traditionally greeting ceremony in Central Europe, so when, you know, the farmer make the bread. It's, it signifies prosperity and bread and salt, so which is a little bit more spice. And, and future, in the future, kind of is a cultural thing, that's how we came to this name. I apologize, we had several projects during this six months, that when all of them with. Two companies, we, we, you know, invested over almost one hundred, hundred thousand dollars in a new system, and everything went through. Approval process. It depends on everything was approved, unfortunately, and that's, at the end, it's my responsibility that. I didn't follow up with the contracting contractor, that he. Follow up with all this permits that required for the changing of windows, I take full responsibility, but. as of right now, I think, uh, we provided plans to the county and town of Buena Vista. And I paid the fees and I'm here just to be memorable part of the community.
We have some water, I think.
Yeah. What I want to say, it's very, historically, it's been very important for us that we are part of the community. Since we opened it in two thousand twenty, January two thousand twenty, we stay open during the winter times. Uh, there's, it's important for for us because couple of things, you know, many restaurants close, close during the time, obviously, it's economical reasons. For us, it's important to stay open all year round so the local people and pass by people can, you know, eat somewhere. Also important for us to have the employees to have secure hours, secure, make some tips. So it's, it's been always very important that our employees are able, able to live on, on our, through our project, through our restaurant. It's, we have a three restaurants. Two of them are Bread and Salt, one is Italian restaurant and I, I think, based on the experience of the one year, I think, I, I really loved what you guys did. The energy, I mean, I've been in many meetings, many H O meetings. You guys have great energy. And I think the goal for the whole town and whole Chaypee County would be kind of the biggest season of the summer season brings the slow season somehow in the winter so the local people can kind of live extremely balanced life. Thank you. Wow, that's great. So like I said, I, I would really appreciate if you get approved by the license. When I follow up, whatever is needed. I think it's extremely important at this time because, uh, before the, the high season starts, I would like to pray my employees, I would like to train every possible safe requirement they require by the state and by town of Buena Vista. And I, I promise that I will follow up with my contractors that, that everything is up to date, up to the standards and up to the regulations. As you, as you can see, I I still saying Buena Vista, I'm saying Buena Vista.
You can change. Buena Vista. It seems like one of the, one of the issues has been why you didn't pay the fees when, when, when you could have gotten started earlier with the construction after the stop work order and you could have gotten going.
I had, I had, I had, I had architect and I've been in contact with him. He's, and he's a great luber that submitted, ordered applications. And I was, I was in communication. He's, he's been in, in Colorado for only one year. So I asked, I've been asking him, do I need to do anything else? No, we need to wait two weeks and then we're gonna they're gonna, you know, the town on the chef is gonna approve it. But now Paula's been saying is three to five weeks.
That's what Doug told me today. It's gonna be two to five weeks for the county to approve the permit once it's been paid. So there was a town fee that you paid today at town and then you're still the county fee that needs to be paid.
So I guess, uh, besides, it's, the building by itself, obviously, it's got some age. Uh, I tried to, we tried to improve it. This was from the backside that supposed, it's not served as employee housing. Right now, uh, my managers, they live in this, I paint them hotel, hotel eight next to the restaurant. And, you know, it's been already three weeks. So, uh, no excuses, no intentional. But it's still my responsibility. I should know, I should have reset for.
Yeah, and, um, you know, we, we have to abide by our, our standards with, you know, which, um, provided that we can approve the liquor license with the conditions. I mean, you really do have to meet all those conditions before the license will be issued too. But yeah, we'd like to have it there.
I am, I am not. It's embarrassing to me to be standing here and defending something that's supposed to be done right and I take full responsibility for it. That's not my standards. That's not our standards of restaurants, but I believe, uh, I give you my word, whatever condition the town and Chaypee County requires, I'm gonna follow up. And I think it's gonna help out the town and, you know, that could come into it and local people. If my performance.
What we want to hear. Any questions?
Do we have anyone from the, I was just curious for more information from like police or code enforcement? Those previous, if they didn't approve it, right? But do they have any ongoing thought on it? Proving, not approving or?
I, I think it came back from the fact that the permits weren't reconciled at the time. And so when the packet's being put together, they have to base it on where things stand at that time. So Paula's provided the latest and greatest. Thank you.
And I also spoke with Police Chief Morgan earlier this afternoon regarding the issue. And he did say that he would be available tonight to answer any of your questions regarding his comments. One of the things he shared with me is that he feels that all applicants need to follow any, any of the permitting processes and things because the serving and selling of liquor is a huge responsibility for the owner and their staff. So that was one of the reasons why he still wants that to be in compliance. And I think Dean is online that we can ask him questions also because he said that he'd be available.
He is on.
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, we, we have a, a problem with the police department signing the application. We wanted to at first see, I, I guess fidelity with the other processes that those needed to be fulfilled before we could reasonably sign off on our portion. And then as Paula stated, um, we feel that, you know, sale of alcohol is a public safety issue that when it's not handled right and the laws aren't complied with, it, it can create problems for us and for the citizens. So, um, just, you know, making sure that on our end, it's stressed that all the processes are followed and that there's acknowledgement of, of how important this responsibility is of having a liquor license.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Dean, what is the training that you recommend? It's called tips, is that it?
Yeah, for any liquor serving establishment, it's called the tips class. And, um, yeah, tips, T I P S, and it's provided through, um, some different entities. And I believe you can go to the Department of Revenue website and find some links and resources to, uh, to attend one of those classes or even have one of the classes brought here.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Mary, I have one. You know, Michael, I'm just curious on, is this your first position you've ever, uh,
as far as. No, I, I, well, follow up. We have a, a two, three restaurants total, two restaurants, uh, two restaurants Frisco, I've been in business since two thousand ten, so twelve years. Uh, with liquor license, no issue at all. And another, the first one, uh, the Bread and Salt, it's been eight years. In Frisco, liquor license, no issue at all.
I guess my question, while I'm gonna, for a go of that, I mean, on these previous, previous businesses, you probably had to do the same businesses that you have now. Were you aware of the process when you were doing your other businesses? Uh, as far as what you had to do as far as permitting and stuff in these other businesses?
The first two, first two businesses, they were ready to go. Everything's in it. There was, we haven't touched anything. Uh, obviously, this form, Evergreen Cafe, it's a little bit outdated. If I wouldn't touch it, wouldn't, if I wouldn't touch the apartments, I could keep people there. I was working on it since January. It's, as you know, it's extremely, a little bit difficult to get in touch people in area, but I'm not really known for my, my handshake. So I just wanted to bring some kind of standards of living to my employees and really improve the, this, the place as we go. We don't have any investors. Everything, whatever we make goes back to business. You, uh, it's very easy to make a phone call to town of Frisco, ask me, ask about me. And, you know, obviously, you don't know me, you know, you never seen me. I have accent, but, uh, you know, my, my reputation reverses and I'm standing behind it.
So your previous, your existing businesses over in Frisco, did you have to go through a process like this to get a particular license or liquor license or anything? You had to go through the same thing and there was no, there was no stumbling blocks for you at that time, so.
Not, not.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if you had previous experience, you know, maybe.
I'm new, I'm new, new bar, new, new boy on the, on the block, I guess. Uh, I have no really, I don't know the old instincts and, and whatever, uh, you know, how to get contractors and stuff like this. You know, obviously, we had two, two businesses in, in Frisco and we had one business on the side and break and it, it just sold during COVID. And everything was super small. Thank you. No, no problems. Thank you. Welcome.
During the background check, did that include the background check on those businesses and liquor license? See if there were, I mean, I want to believe everything you're saying here. No issues at all with liquor license there, but did the background checks look in that or anything? So we could have.
You can call the problems to the town of Frisco. Uh, if there's any issues. There's no issues.
The background checks that we do for liquor license and things is just directly on Michael and yeah, and things to see if there's any issues there.
Sorry, I'm also new, new guy on the block, so. Gotta learn all that.
There's no additional conditions that need to be tied to this. If we go ahead with this and I know, I know certainly, one, two, three, four, five, six of the mirrors or any other additional ones that we need to tie to this.
You know.
Recently?
As far as the conditions and things, the one that got resolved today was paying of the town fees. But not the county fees. The county fees come after infected though? Now, the county fees, both the county and the town requires a fees to be paid upfront before the permits are even reviewed. To make, it's because what staff does, they review the permits and the application to make sure everything is compliant. And there's always a fee associated with that. So when the applications were received, the fees were not. So it's been sitting there until Michael has come in to pay the fees. He paid the town permit fee today. And so Doug reviewed it this morning and emailed it to the county. And then, um, he did call and confirm the county has received his email, has all the, you know, applications. But Michael needs to make payment with them. So.
So just make that payment right away and hope, you know, hope that time goes quickly. Cause you can't resume work until the permit to do so is received, right? Correct?
Well, the, the work that they're doing, it has nothing to do with restaurants. It's just because it's a whole building. It's the apartments behind the restaurants. There's a two apartments behind the restaurants. An operational staff, operation.
There, I feel like the applicant has gone, you know, as far as criteria, I think the applicant has used most of the boxes off the fourth one, you know, I think, um, if we do do a motion, it's like to have those conditions attached in that motion. The payment that goes right there. And I think that would cover that number four for.
Talking about the little round bullet points.
Yes, you know, number four on the criteria. I think if he can meet those conditions before he's issued that license, I think that would cover that part of it.
I would definitely want that added to that. What I would like is to consider that, that within so many days that anybody that is granted a liquor license takes the tips class. I think that that's important to protect underage drinkers and it happens. It happens in this town. And so I think if, um, within so many days, and you guys could think about it, but consider making that tips class mandatory to get a liquor license.
That might be a criteria fill up or is that what I'm trying to say? Cause I believe that course is required.
The course is required. It falls onto the business owners to ensure that their staff is tip certified. So.
Just an out of benefit. I mean, I'm all for it. Definitely.
I didn't realize it was required. That makes a difference.
It, it does. It, the, the benefit of it, especially when Chief Morgan brings it up is that's talking about for a new liquor license required. But I think a good ongoing practice is to take the course. And I think that's the recommendation that's starting to come up more. Existing staff or existing establishment.
Every employee, as they come on board, are required to take that. That's good.
And we do have several businesses here in town that ensure that their employees have that class and they actually host the class for other business owners here and their staff to be tip certified. There are several of us in this room that have taken the tips training and things. So just so that we're aware what employees go through. So.
So Mark, you're talking about the items number one, number two, number three, and number four.
Yeah, like right here, yeah.
Okay. But if you look down below, going on down, um, to the bottom of one twenty-nine. And that's where they're saying that the board should consider the following, um, it, conditions.
Yeah, I'd like to see that part of the motion.
Do you want to word that as, or add it to one of these as a condition? And how would you word it?
Well, I think I would just, um, you know, make a motion to approve the license with the following conditions. Um, for the license is.
Better song page on.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll try.
Okay.
I opened a piano on there tonight. Uh, public comment. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I guess we're not really at that point, Mark. Sorry.
No, I'm good.
Okay. So are there any other questions from the trustees for this staff? Okay. Then I will open this up to public comment. Is, is there anyone from the public who would like to state any concerns or support for this issue? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom?
Okay. And no one, no one from the public? Okay, then I close the public hearing. And now the board can deliberate. And when you're ready, as part of that process, somebody can make a motion. Are there any more deliberations or discussion?
Yeah, I think as long as those conditions are met, you know, he's paid the town and as long as uh, the county has paid for the, uh, building permit fees, I would be in support of it. If we wanted to wait and postpone the hearing, that could be another option as well. But I think as long as everything is checked off.
Yeah, it seems like we can cover it with the conditions. Any other comments over there? Peter, nothing? Okay. How about Sue? Where's Sue go? Excuse me, I don't think she's eligible to discuss.
I can't talk.
I can't talk about it. I know how you feel, Sue.
So, um, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Eric, might take a while, but here we go. Uh, make a motion to approve the application for the hotel and restaurant liquor license for Miami. Uh, BV LLC with the following conditions. Payment of applicable building permit fees, certificate of occupancy issued by JP County Development Services Department. Certificate of occupancy issued by the town of Vista. Final inspections and approval from the JP County Fire Protection District. And final inspections and approval from JP County Environmental Health before license will be issued.
Do we have Jenkins Swisher? Any discussion? Do we do a roll call vote? No, okay, uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We just have to get through the conditions.
Thank you.
Great.
I wasn't studying, but.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, public hearing, I guess is already closed, good. Okay. All right, now we're.
Yes, good evening, everyone, my report is on page one forty-three of the packet. Highlight a few things, first off, um, the process for the next town administrator, hiring the next town administrator. Is moving along well, the, the search committee has established, um. The timeline, um, taking from the discussion of the last board meeting. Um, so the job advertisement has been out and we have received nine applications. Which is, I think, a very strong showing, um, so far. And it does close tomorrow, so the committee will meet this Friday to go through those applications. Um, we have set up an, an initial evaluation process that we're going to use to review the first set of applicants. Um, and then hopefully, if we're able, uh, the committee will then select. People to come in for an in-person interview, so. You'll see there that we're trying to line up, um, being able to make some, some public announcements in July. Uh, as part of the required process, we have to, um, make public the list of finalists. Uh, fourteen days before the board is able to take any formal action with an employment contract. So what we're looking at is July twelfth to, um, present the finalists or make those finalists known. And then schedule time at the board meeting on the twenty-sixth to bring those finalists in to meet the board. Um, probably present themselves and maybe go through a little exercise there. It really does kind of depend on how many people are brought through as finalists, so. Uh, the committee will keep the board informed on how that starts to shape up as we go through the evaluation.
So will the committee interview these people before they're brought before the board?
Yes, so the list of applicants, um, is, is kept confidential. Until the, until the finalists are made public, so the committee will be, uh, interviewing before the finalists come to the board.
When they pick the finalists, would, in our packets, would we get their resumes?
Absolutely, we'll make all them to available to the board. Which will then become public documents. Redacted, of course. Yeah, so the board will be able to see all of them. Uh, we're session tonight with EB School District, thank you all for lots of good questions, I think. I think we did receive the direction we were hoping for on that. Now, let's see. We are. You. The. Two versions here, so water, I did receive a call from Senator Hickenlooper's office today, it was a good news. Um, our CBS request, congressional direct, directed spending request, uh, has been. Pushed forward or submitted for the next round of review. So this is the one million dollar request for federal funds for the phase two of our water treatment. So it's great to hear, um, that our, that our application and our project are looked at favorably. And we should know probably around December whether we're going to receive funds, so that or not. We will proceed with our SRF loan process and everything as usual. Until December on that. Um, some bad news on Arizona Trail. So we did what, what we've been trying to do for years, we got it out there, got it to bid and unfortunately we did not receive any bids. And so the group met with C dot to review feedback on possibly why, and not surprising. Uh, contractors are busier than they care to be and no one's really looking to commit to pricing right now on something that's a stretch for them. So, um, disappointing, but, uh, we are looking to keep the project open this year. And we're going to go out to bid again this fall, probably late September, October timeframe, hoping that contractors. Are starting to prepare for next year's project, so. That is the plan forward, but what that will do is push those funds into next year if the board wants to keep this project. And, um, I want to follow up on an email I did send yesterday, that just came in. The Colorado opioid settlement tracker app is live now and so. Um, back last August, the town did enter into an MOU to participate in this program, which is. Uh, receiving funds from the pharmaceutical companies that were found liable. I don't know how to still phrase that, but they're having to pay out, um, to the state, uh, through those court cases. And so in that email, you, you, you saw my summary, um, the town's share for year one is about. Sixteen hundred dollars and over the course of eighteen years would be just under fifteen thousand dollars. So, not much. Um, considering that these funds need to be used for very specific programs that deal with treatments. Uh, related to opioids and so it's not much to do as a silo or standalone program. So there is this concept of pooling the funds at a regional level or perhaps even at a county level. Regional level would probably be multiple counties, um, but we're still looking into the option of maybe pooling them at the county level and. Maybe do something with these funds, so. The direction it seems that I need from the board now is, do you, would you like to receive these funds directly? And hold on and maybe see down the line if there's something that the town can come up with. That's useful with these funds with, at these amounts or, uh, continue to explore pooling the, the funds. And I'll take direction.
I'd be much more in favor of pooling the funds, cause I think it's just too, it's too little of an amount for us to effectively do anything.
I think I'm really in love with pamphlets. I think pooling is a good idea.
I think pooling is a good idea, I'd like to see it stay in the county.
Okay.
Yeah, I would too. Great.
Okay.
Do, um, police and emergency services carry Narcan?
Um, I know that they are starting to receive those, I do believe so, but, and we have both chiefs on. This is Chief Morgan, Chief Bertrault, did you hear that question?
I did, yeah, the police department, we got a supply of Narcan from, um, Chaffey County Public Health. So each of our officers has it in their car, we also have some here at the department near our evidence processing for officer exposure.
Awesome.
Yeah, the, the priority department right now does not carry them.
Do you have them, chief?
No, we do not. And, um, and then I do want to mention that I think, um, Lisa Lamb handed out, they're doing the ribbon cutting next week. I know many of us will be out, I feel bad, I, cause I think that's a great thing, so if anybody's not going to see them.
That'd be nice if we had some people there.
And I think I will stop there, the other.
Okay, um, thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
Uh, we are ready for the treasurer report, Michelle.
Thank you, mayor, trustees, um, my report is on page one forty-six of the packet and, um. Since May, uh, so many weeks in it, I had some catch-up to do with the pay period analysis. And then there are a lot of, uh, checks over two thousand that were written. I wanna be brief. Because in the first quarter report, in a little bit, there'll be some information that. Will probably spur some discussion or whatever, so I spend more time on the first quarter report. And this is just what I always give you, so I will entertain questions.
I have a couple curiosity questions. Black fire fence on Tompkins Road. Where is Tompkins Road?
Must be off of Yale.
Yeah, Tom, well, Tompkins off of West Main. Just past the, yeah, the Joey House. Yeah, large.
Was it on our. Wherever where we.
Don't actually know, I apologize, I don't know that. I bet it's public works and I can get a response.
Or it was air heater. What, what are the air heater kits that went to like town hall? Police station and the water department?
Cindy, can you direct me to which one?
Steven and Chris Lortman, it's the second one up from the bottom. For five thousand three hundred for MX one fifty L A and air heater kit. They were, I'm not.
Maybe, Michael, yeah.
I was just curious what an air heater fit was, not, not saying it wasn't needed or questioning, I was just curious.
Any other treasury questions? Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
So, um, Chief Morgan? Ready for your report?
Good evening, uh, mayor trustees, I hope everyone's doing well. I'll just go through my report real briefly here, um, you can see through some of the photos there, some of our activities over the last few weeks. Grant got pepper sprayed recently, Jesse Mitchell is our pepper spray instructor. And Grant, uh, wanted to carry some, uh, mostly for dogs and things like that, aggressive dogs that he might encounter. But the training does require an exposure, so we kind of have a philosophy that nobody fights alone, so I decided to go ahead and take a hit with him, so. That's, yeah, that's me suffering in the corner spraying, uh, icy water into my eyes for relief, so. Um, really grateful for Jesse Mitchell for putting on the training and we're glad that, uh, Grant has that tool at his disposal. Some of the other trainings our officers have been to, uh, over the past few weeks. Um, we sent Fraser to, uh, traffic accident investigation, that's a week-long school. That'll help us as we investigate crashes and things throughout town. Uh, we had two officers go to field training officer school, which helps us with, uh, training new hires. Um, Amber and Fraser went to suicide prevention gatekeeper school. And then we also did, uh, in-house training on felony stops. Um, recently I went with my daughter's class to Washington DC. And that was right at the beginning of, uh, National Police Week that was, uh, put in place by President Kennedy. I believe that was in nineteen sixty-two, uh, one of the events of Police Week is, um, all the officers. Who were killed in the line of duty the previous year, meaning twenty twenty-one, their names are added to the memorial wall. And, um, it was a pretty sobering experience for me, I, I've been there before, I have the couple friends whose names are on that wall. And, uh, to be there at Police Week and see a lot of the families of fallen officers there, it's a pretty powerful thing. Uh, just for, um, reference, there were a hundred seventy-nine police officers killed in the line of duty in twenty twenty-one. Um, sixty-two by gunfire, um, seventeen by vehicular assault, twenty-four in crashes. Um, seventy-one were shot, not killed, but shot in ambush attacks. Um, and then outside of that, four hundred fifty-one were killed, um, or died of COVID. Uh, which is a kind of a reminder that first responders, um, didn't get to quarantine and it did take its toll. So, um, you'll see there in some of the photos, um, two Colorado officers were shot and killed in the line of duty last year. Officer Beasley, who was shot in an ambush attack in Arvada, and Officer Tally, who was shot at the King Super's active shooter in Boulder. We had a range day for our employees, um, for town employees, um, on May twenty-fifth. Um, we had a lot of fun, a really good turnout. Uh, we have a nice family in town that every now and then donates a gift card to the police department, so we use one of those gift cards to Sorelli's. And they, uh, um, we were able to provide lunch for everybody, so we appreciate that. Um, I know the mayor and, uh, trustee Cobb joined us out there and then several other employees with the town and hopefully they had a good time. There's a couple photos of that, and then our canine chew toy down there at the bottom, that's Officer Maruza's. Yeah, he's the one who puts on the bite suit and lets our canine Thor, um, practice. Uh, that was fun, um, we hope to do that again next year, so if anybody wasn't able to attend, uh, maybe next year. Um, just wrapping up real quick, Memorial Day, super busy weekend for us, um, had a lot of fun interacting with the citizens. Um, visiting the, they're down on South Main, which went really well. Um, I want to thank the Surf Hotel in Jed for, you know, really reaching out to us for some feedback. And trying to work with us and make sure that it goes as smooth and as safely as it can, so that was nice. Um, big, big summer ahead of us still, uh, Fourth of July is the, the big one coming up for us. Uh, parades, fireworks, uh, we got a planning meeting for all of that tomorrow. Uh, just a reminder that, you know, with all these special things, um, our officers still have to handle the regular calls for service and things that come up. So it, it keeps us busy for sure. Um, I want to acknowledge Officer Eli Brito, who got voted Bina Vista's favorite police officer. So, uh, that was through the Chaffey County Times there, so, uh, we gave him, uh, a little reward for that. And, um, that speaks to the department values on community policing and things like that, so good job to Officer Brito. And there's some statistics there about our, um, DUI enforcement and some of the calls for service we had over the Memorial Day weekend. Uh, just for reference, the, uh, DUI enforcement, we get that through a C dot grant. And they give, um, police officers or police agencies, we're on the state money to conduct extra patrols, just to hunt DUIs. And have that extra presence that hopefully. Just to hunt DUIs and have that extra presence that hopefully acts as a deterrent. So people don't drink and drive. Or use substances and drive. And the overtime for that is paid by the state, not the town. And that's a nice way for officers to make some extra money and also help keep the streets safe. And then tomorrow night, we have our annual inspection, which we do at least once a year. And all of our officers' uniforms and equipment are closely inspected, as well as the nice police cars the town gives us. And we're making sure officers are keeping everything clean and up to date and professional. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Any questions for? The police chief?
Yeah. Quick question about you mentioned about the citations and case reports over Memorial Day. You talk about including two mental health slash correspondence since I'm. I assume you can't go into the actual incidents, but I was just curious if. That is working with Sol Vista and if those are. Becoming more common and helpful to you and the other officers.
Yes, thank you. That's a good question. Yeah, we. We are seeing an increase in that and we added a tab in our report writing system for mental health. So as we go to more of these, officers can log that on their reports. And it'll kind of help us track how many case reports we're pulling from that. And just keep in mind, case reports are different than calls for service because not everyone. Required, not every one of those calls requires a report. Usually the more serious ones do. So these were people that were in distress for whatever reason, needed somebody to talk to. Or were, you know, having some issues with depression or things like that. And, you know, sometimes that can be a police matter. And having the co-responder through Sol Vista, that's who we've been using. It's been a really great resource. We really appreciate it. And we think it's a great program. So hopefully they can expand it to, right now I think we have two. For the whole county. So that's makes it tough on them, but it's a big help for sure.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks for some more information on that. And if there's anything we can do to help with that. Let us know. I think it's great to really help and support mental health here.
I agree, yeah. And Sol Vista's been really good to work with. We have a big training exercise coming up in July. And they've volunteered to help us be a part of that and just coordinate with a lot of the people participating in that and. We've got a really good working relationship with them and, you know, we hope to continue that and we hope they can expand. They just opened a regional assessment center down in, on the heart of the Rockies campus. And I'm sure they'd be glad to give anybody a tour of it who's interested.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Okay, Chief Bertram.
Yeah, good evening. So I'll go through my stuff here fairly quickly. Still busy with inspections and plan review. Kira's been busy with. With all of it, it is slowing down a little bit for in the county after they put some restrictions or moratorium on. Subdivisions for a while. So that's given her a little bit of a reprieve. Get out there and do other things. She was also voted best to BB firefighter for last year, so. That was a surprise for her. And then, you know, outside of that, I guess Kira's big focus, she's got most of Main Street done with inspections moving out. A big focus has been on the seasonal businesses. As they were opening up for the summer. As we move into training stuff, still wildlands can be a big focus in June, wildland and auto extrication. Along with wildland fire, it's kind of exciting. On Saturday, we received our brand new type six brush truck, so that'll be in addition to our fleet. So we're excited to have that in service. We still have the application period open for facilities and equipment maintenance person as well as wildland mitigation coordinator. Fortunately, the application's been a little slow coming in, so we're still hoping to find the right person to be able to fill those positions because they are. They're vital to us growing. Fire restrictions, we are currently not in fire restrictions. Fire danger did go back up to high. Neighborhood counties are in restrictions. Gunnison County's fax is going into restrictions tonight at midnight. So we'll probably be dipping back into that here before too long. Memorial Day, we were able to. How about the American Legion? It was great to see everybody come together. We. Many of our firefighters participated in the ceremony, so I think it was a good showing. It was great showing from the community out there for their annual ceremony. Station four, our Pontius Spring Station. Is, we're gonna have a public open house on July third. It's. Not gonna be complete yet, but I told them we are gonna be bringing people in there. We're excited to have that, so. Pontius Springs is doing their Fourth of July parade on the third. Parade's getting in in front of our fire station. We're gonna do an open house. If you happen to be in that area, I encourage you to stop by and see it. Then. Chubb Park, we're still working with them on the fire pits and restrictions, all of that. And then as far as our resident firefighter program, as we're looking to grow with our Pontius Spring Station, we did bring on two new resident firefighters this week. Start on Monday. And then we've got three others scheduled for July. As soon as they arrive, we'll be doing an intensive firefighter one academy. Basically, it's five days a week. I just. That's my firefighter one stuff that'll go for about a month and a half. And as Chief Morgan said earlier, Fourth of July is coming up, so we're gonna be busy with that as well. With fireworks in in BV, but also on the south end of the county. So let's step going with that. Call volume. We're still still on the rise unfortunately with calls. As of today, we are at two hundred and sixty-one calls for the year. And we're. You know, still trending upwards, but that's. I guess that's to be anticipated with all the people visiting. Solid gun for you guys. After you answer any questions.
Chief, who is it that makes the decision to change the level of fire restrictions?
So the fire restrictions, we coordinate with the US Forest Service. They do a lot of. A lot of the things they do is fuel moisture sampling in the forest. They've got a whole, they've got a whole criteria checklist. So it's all based off scientific data. If it meets certain criteria. We we change that. They send out. Fairly regularly the update on it. And so we coordinate with the Forest Service on changing those.
Thank you. I suppose it's all heat and heat and wind and humidity. It's been so gusty recently.
So so wind does have a factor because it helps dry it, dry out the fuels. So we've got one hour, ten hour and hundred hour fuels based on the size of it. And so a lot of what goes into it is when they do sampling of how much moisture is in the fuel, that really helps with our fire danger, understand how. The fire danger really reflects how readily the fuels will burn. So it does have a little bit to do with local weather, but it's really the trends of winds and high heat. That lower the fuel moistures and cause that fire danger to go up or down.
Yeah, Chief, I got a question related to that. So say, I know the town and the county are on the same page as far as restrictions. Do the Forest Service and BLM had a follow-in and everybody's pretty much consistent across that?
We're. We're trying. You know, this this last go around when we had restrictions, BLM went into restrictions way ahead of everybody. BLM, their main office is. Based out of King and City. Their made their office, they cover about twelve counties. So they put on a blanket restriction thing that caught us all off guard. Typically, the way when Forest Service is getting ready to go to restrictions. They usually notify us, us being the two fire chiefs in the county as well as Sheriff Speezy. And then we get together and. And make a decision whether we're gonna follow them into restrictions or not. So the Forest Service. Is really good about telling us, unfortunately, when they've got to have a whole declaration that takes. A couple days to be able to go into restrictions. Whereas at county level and even town level, we can go into restrictions when we need to. So it makes us easier. Makes it easier to go into restrictions with the Forest Service. So we're really trying to coordinate it, so it's not. As confusing. You know, because we do have public lands and private lands right next to each other. If you guys are familiar with Chubb Park. Chubb Park is state lands, which falls underneath county criteria. And it's surrounded with BLM on one side, US Forest Service on the other. So there could be a potential of having three different levels of restrictions. All right there. So that's why it's important we're. We're getting better every year trying to coordinate it.
Good, thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Okay. So now we are ready to talk about the airport. We have Jack.
Good evening, Mayor Trustees. My report can be found on page one fifty-five, fifty-six and fifty-seven. I'll start with staffing. I was away last week on a. Airport conference, so we get together with a lot of the other. Airport managers, the CDOT aeronautics and is FA number of briefings. Couple takeaways from that. CDOT will reopen the surplus sales again this year. They canceled them last year because of COVID. So that might give us an opportunity to get some equipment, a much needed snowplow. As well come August. Around the end of August, early September, we'll go into a. Capital Airport Capital Improvement Plan meeting. That'll be a coordinate, that'll be a joint meeting with myself. FA and CDOT. So we'll be planning out. Current years out to twenty twenty-eight. So that, once we have that sit down, we'll be able to better look at budgeting for the town as well. Shonda was out, our operations officer was out. She just recently sold her house and purchased a new house up by Trail West area, so she was moving. They were out till, just got back on Monday. And then our new line tech that we have, Gavin, he's gonna be away until the tenth of July. And then we'll get him back online and we'll be fully staffed. The apron rehab project for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we're having a meeting with Dibble this Thursday to finalize some of the criterias on it. And FA will with, after that meeting, hopefully FA will finally, finally do the final sign off on the grant. The environmentals are all done. We had to redo a few environmentals because we had to extend the apron, so, but all the environmental's done. All the proposals are done, so. There's no real hitches. It's just, it's just bureaucracy and paperwork. I'll come back around to one of the proposals we were looking at is re. We're saying renaming, but really it's resigning of County Road three nineteen and three twenty. I won't get into it now. I have a little slide at the end. And I can discuss that a little bit further. All that to say, it has been on the my BV for the last couple of weeks for public comments. I didn't actually see too much. I didn't see anything actually. It has been approved by the Board of Airport Advisory Board, the naming. And again, I'll come back to that. Operations. Unfortunately, we're down a bit this month. I think, well, wind, weather, fuel. But last year this time, we had tests and so that made an impact. Our. Twenty twenty-two F fuel, surprising enough, is about the same as last year, but our jet fuel is quite, quite a bit lower. Operations, if you get in, you can see. You'll see the chart and operations. You can see we're up a bit in twenty-one as opposed to twenty-two, but. Back in twenty twenty compared to twenty-two, we're pretty much on par, if not ahead. I was away last week and so was Chandra, so we didn't have an opportunity to put the fuel report in. But I do have it. So it does show that our fuel, jet fuel is off. In our. Our jet or one hundred low lead fuel is a little bit lower, but again, we're higher than we were last year at this time. And the chart. I don't have the chart for that because, again, we were both away. I can, I'll have that in the next report as well as the June report. So this. So this right here is what we're proposing is. To take County Road three nineteen, so as you turn off a steel and come to the airport. It sort of helps identify the airport, gives a destination. And it, you know, it promotes the airport where it is and a number of airports throughout the nation. You know, if you go by an airport, it always says Airport Road, Airport Drive. We don't have that and we're trying to. My proposal is to make it and change the name. Now for three nineteen, I'm saying Aviation Road because in the county, Slida already has Airport Road, so I can't name it that. So that's one of the reasons we're saying Aviation Road. The three twenty, as you turn down, it come off of three nineteen, turned out to three twenty, we were proposing Air Park. Air Parkway. One of the main reasons is. If you look off to the, on the right slide up top, we got Air Park Circle. We got, that's where our hangar is, but this is. All our development just south of that where the hand is and going south. We've always advertised that as Aviation Park Development, so that's why we're proposing. For three twenty, the B Air Park. And then our park circle, which we have a hangar there right now. Again, it's not gonna change the address, like the postal addresses. Everybody's address will be still. One, two, three, County Road three nineteen, just like our airporters. Our airport address right now is. Twenty-seven ninety-six County Road three nineteen. That's not gonna change as far as mailing or anything. We're just arguably just putting a re-signage to help identify. A destination and sort of help promote the airport. So we're looking for any kind of comments or approval on that. Because if we go this route, obviously we'll have to coordinate with the county. But before I wanted to jump into county, I just wanted to see if the town was on board first. So I'll leave that to any comments and I can certainly answer any questions.
I remember. Maybe a year ago, Joseph made a presentation about naming of roads. Would this fit within your? The scheme of naming of roads?
Would not have been a presentation by me. It is the board's authority to assign or rename roads within the municipal boundaries. Whether or not that official authority would need exercising in this case when. I don't.
It's like in your neighborhood, everything is barnwood.
I got ideas.
I think it would make sense to rename something that for like Kate said, I mean, it does help people locate and understand and promote. I don't see any comment. I'm actually surprised we haven't done it yet.
I'm in favor of doing that and just sat in on the discussion at the Airport Advisory Board and I. Think it's a good idea. I think the first time I drove to the airport, I mean, I was surprised that there wasn't anything that really denoted. Off of Steel, I guess it's Steel Street or, or maybe I've got the wrong name, but I was surprised that it wasn't. Clear exactly where you turn off that that road. So I like the idea.
Anybody else have comments? Okay. So. Do we just do a head nod or do we?
Yeah, I think direct, what we want to make sure is there's no strong feelings against pursuing, because a lot of this will be, we gotta go talk to the county.
No, those are great.
I do have a quick one that I missed in my report. I apologize.
Okay, please stop.
So follow up to last meeting. When Envision and the team has been working on fire mitigation. The update on the North Cottonwood effort. There was a request for money contribution towards those efforts from the town. They were looking for twenty to twenty-five thousand. We do have ten thousand in our twenty twenty-two budget practically dedicated for wildfire mitigation. So. That's what we have discovered since then. We have not had a chance to dig into any additional grant opportunities, but Kim did. Offer to help us if we did find a grant. If the town was interested in pursuing. Will the funding be available? So the town does have ten thousand already budgeted, which is good. So. So we can talk trustee staff or we can bring it back next meeting. But if you all have a desire to go ahead and commit that or expand that to twenty thousand to match the request. Think about that.
Yeah, so, okay. Do we want to talk about that now?
Maybe we could get through Michelle, if you want to report.
Okay. So are we okay with forging ahead or does anybody need a break? So Michelle, I think we're ready for your first quarter.
Thank you, Mayor Trustees. They're gonna, you're gonna forge ahead Devon so that you don't ask any question. Cindy, to your questions regarding the Tompkins fence that was coded to the water department, the dry field ditch supplies. So that had a hard wire run along that road up there.
So Tompkins North.
We, we did in collaboration with the the, the, like another names. That are irrigating the land for us. We are letting them graze their cattle on certain parts of the property and so that fence was installed.
Then to your other question regarding the lion air heater kit. This is something that Sean has wanted to pick up. It is a waste oil heater package and the reason it was coded to both to all three places. Public Works is so that they would have a place to dispose of their used oil and they could burn it for some heat and I believe it was installed at the Public Works. Okay, so that's what that is, two hundred and fifteen gallons waste oil tank. So I wanted to include those. So moving on to the sales tax rate, to the first quarter financial status report. Sales tax generated through March of twenty twenty-two has come up to a total year to date of a million point oh four nine. And that's eighty-three thousand dollars higher than twenty-one and forty-two thousand, almost forty-three thousand higher than twenty twenty-two. So even after the first month, the January lower than expected region on the sales tax, it has recovered and we are, we are starting to show excess, excess sales tax. So that's the sales tax graph that I had in my report last, last meeting. If you want to scroll down, Philip, to the one more, there, that's the sales tax graph. And it is showing just a, just a touch higher than last year on those. The next graph is the balance sheet for all funds. This doesn't change very much from time, from one period to another, assets are twenty thousand. And includes fixed assets of about ten thousand, so.
Three millions.
Yes. What's a few zero, right? Twenty million and ten million in fixed assets. And, and the liabilities are two million, two point six millions. We have a very good cash position and near cash position as far as the balance sheet goes. Then the, what, the graph that I am wanting to talk to you guys about mostly is the fund balances. And that's the balance sheet that you have there, Philip. So that is the, the blue bar is the first quarter fund balances. And that's regarding what actually our fund balance is. What we have actually received versus what we have actually spent and the fund balances. Then the orange bar is projected through the entire year. And what I wanted to point out in both of these graphs is I have made a new column for the ARPA funds. And we are kind of setting the ARPA funds aside. Just calling them out so that they don't get swallowed up into the general fund balance. And there's no clarity on what is actually in there. We will be receiving the second half of the ARPA funds sometime this month. Shortly, actually, and so that will, that will total to seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That second tranche will be three hundred and sixty, so that will add up to the seven hundred and twenty. Now, we had talked about putting a hundred thousand of that to the
Carbon Street.
Carbon Street project and then the remainder of that six hundred and twenty thousand to the water project. I don't think we've totally settled on that, but that is what I reported in the ARPA report is what we were expecting to spend that on. The police station reserve is a million and thirty-three thousand. And I wanted to call that out so that we can have clarity as to what we are actually contributing from the general fund to the police station project. And it is made up of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand for the sale of the fire truck, fire station. And then there was a hundred thousand for the fire truck. And another hundred and five thousand for fire equipment. And and then that part of the equipment was the rescue number seven, which was an F five fifty. Then, so if you take the, those things, that adds up to the one million oh three three. And, and we sold the Belden lot, is that what we sold, Philip? Sold the Belden lot and that was three hundred thousand dollars. And that is not in the here. So you can effectively can just add three hundred thousand dollars to the police station reserve. Because since it wasn't budgeted and we haven't expended it, it, it kind of nets out in, in the regular revenues and expenses calculation of the fund balance. And just adds three hundred thousand to the police station reserve. So we do have one point three set aside for the police station. And if I was correct in assuming the Belden lot proceeds are supposed to go to the police station.
I have a question. On the twenty-seven percent reserve.
Yes.
For the Board of Trustees, why does that number change so much? It goes from four hundred eighty-three thousand to nineteen hundred, I mean, one point nine million.
Because it's based on revenues at the time, so.
It's probably the whole year then.
Yeah, that one point nine is the whole year of revenues. If we receive everything that we're planning on receiving, there's grant revenues and stuff in there. And so in the spreadsheet that this is created from, it's just a formula. It takes that revenue box and multiplies it by twenty-seven percent and puts it in there.
So if that number weren't so large, then the fund balance would be even bigger than it is.
If we, yeah, if we were doing twenty-seven percent, yes.
Yeah, or if you were doing twenty-seven percent of a different number. So, yeah, good.
Okay. The, the street fund bond has been partially relieved. Payment has been partially relieved now at this point. So in June, in May, we made a payment of interest only on the street bond of once, that one seventy-six. So that should be reduced to date by the thirty-four thousand. And then we have also made a payment on the water enterprise, the Corta reserve. So those things, once I do the final of once the final fund balance, once Philip does the final fund balance. Those two numbers will be gone because they'll be inherent in the expenditures column. We'll have paid it, so it will be there. Does that make sense? It just moves from one column to another.
It does to me too.
Okay, and, and then there's the table reserve and loan covenant reserve. Carp, Corta, CDFPHE requires, we set aside a certain amount. I think it's considered to be three, three months expenditures, operating expenses as a, as a reserve, just to keep, just as a liquidity measure. And it's a common covenant. That number comes from the audit. The auditor derives that number and that's what we use. So what's next? Oh, we have we have our investment detailed summary and it shows the activity for the bonds. The net change in money market, in market value of these bonds as the as the interest rate goes higher. Now, and there's been a, the change in the money market has to, the market value has to do with the economy. And when the economy dumps, then the bond market value comes. It doesn't change the yield because you're going to get the interest regardless. That's why the flight to, to, to bonds happens when the stock market dents. So the stock market has been falling, rates have been going up on new issues of bonds. And therefore, our bonds are less valuable if we were to sell them prior to maturity. So we have negotiated the contract that we're going to hold these bonds till maturity. So we know when our yield is going to be regardless. However, market value and the change in market value is one of the audit is required by Gatsby to be booked. I don't like it. It's, it's kind of misleading as far as I'm concerned because we're not going to sell our bonds unless we have a real liquidity problem, which we don't. We'll hold our bonds to maturity and we'll keep getting the interest and, and everything that we have been getting and what we knew we would get. But the, the market value has gone down. It is starting to rebound now with rates going up. And I think the, the May had, actually is a positive change in market value. So take it with a grain of salt, but you still have three point five million market value in bonds. So, and then that is the first page of the statement. Ending March thirty-first, that shows the three point five one, three point five four one in bond value, which ties to the reconciliation. And then Devon, wake up. You're kind of getting low in the chair.
She just called you out.
The budget report shows that we're on bu, on budget, on, on target as far as revenues and expenses for each of the funds. And you can deep dive or skim over the, that budget report as you seek it. And that concludes my report and I will be happy to take any further questions.
For newbies, the, the ARPA Fund Reserve, not familiar with that?
American Rescue Plan. Every town, every city, town, county, state, blah, 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 got an allocation from the COVID ARPA, American Rescue Plan. And that is, we have to report on how we use it. And it is certain projects are, are more widely used. So that is why we're mostly going to be using it for water, which is one of the favorite children of the administration. And then affordable houses was, was another. So.
Michelle, when do we have to spend that money?
End of twenty twenty-three, four, okay, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a long time, so. We have time to think about how we really want to use it and if we want to re-allocate it. And but eventually, well, Philip will have to submit expense reports and stuff on how it's actually.
Thank you. Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. It's been the last time I'm having to put all that together.
Yeah, well, I'll be submitting my reports on, on the, my notes. It's not like I don't mean or mean or you have to do this. I will be doing anything somewhere else.
I'll be watching. Okay, let's go on to item G, the family medical leave insurance program for the state of Colorado.
Michelle, you want me to run with this one?
Sure.
Okay, so the memo outlines what this is all about. But just a little bit of context here, so back in twenty twenty, the state of Colorado voters approved a a family leave insurance program that would be offered through the state. And so that is what we now refer to as the family program. So the state is now launching that and putting it back on the municipalities and other entities that are tied into this program. We have to start making decisions and so for, before you tonight is a consideration and a recommendation that we opt out of this program at this time. So a little bit about this program. It, it essentially allows employees and the employer, if they are opted in to the program, to pay an insurance premium that helps cover a portion of an employee's salary if they are out for a certain period of time. So you can see that kind of outlined in the, some of the conditions of that in here. There is a shared, a split of that insurance premium between the employer and the employee. But that amount kind of is not, is a little fluctuating right now. It's a very new program, which is one of the reasons why we are we are saying we should opt out at this time. If we opt in, we are, we have to stay for a minimum of three years. Um, and then after that point, we could opt out. If we opt out now, we can opt back in at any time. So if it. They iron it all out, we think it's a good program in the future, we can opt in at that point. Um. So in terms of process here, uh what we have to do if we uh are going to opt out. Is we have to uh provide notice to all of our employees, which we have. Uh, John, I put together a really good form, and I think the trustees might have actually received that as well, um I think. Um, but it 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 provided information about the program. The fact that staff is recommending to the board that we opt out and then the date of the meeting, um which is today, that we are considering this. So budget impact for twenty twenty two, there is no impact, um because this would not start until twenty twenty three. There would certainly be a budget impact in twenty twenty three if we stayed in. Um, going through our recommendation. One of the primary reasons that we're we're recommending to opt out at this time. Is we currently have a great set of um benefits uh where we. Uh, where our employees are able to accrue um sick leave hours. At a pretty healthy pace. I think most all of us built up quite a nest egg of sick time.
Yes.
That covers a long period of time. So uh certainly getting into that like twelve, twelve week. Leave kind of time period when you think about somebody needing to beat out, be out for uh medical conditions or. New baby, those sorts of things. So that's primary reason number one. Uh, the other reason really from our perspective is this is a new program and there's still details that are. So we don't feel like it's a good idea to jump in this.
In addition, we do offer long term and short term disability, which once your um. Your sick leave and your vacations all used up, the short term disability will kick in. Once that's used up, the long term disability kicks in if it become, if it's an issue of. The personal health of the of the employee. So we kind of felt that it was. Uh, dup- duplicative of the uh. Of the benefits of the family program that we are kind of, if we did this, we would kind of be double covering.
And interestingly enough, um the way the program's set up now, even if the town is has opted out, in individual employees can still opt in. They pay their portion of the insurance premium. Uh, they have to submit that directly to the program. It doesn't go through the town as an as a. As the employer if we're opted out, but they can still opt into the program. And then the s- the state covers the other half. So, any questions and and Jeff Parker helps. Lay out the process and the resolution and everything for this, so he can answer questions, too.
So does the town have any kind of um maternity leave policy or paternity leave?
Not separate from um the things that we mentioned.
But it would qualify, I mean, if somebody said they needed to stay at home for a few months with their newborn. It would qualify as an illness?
Well, we would use probably a combination of sick time, vacation time or leave.
What about caring for a family member? That sick people's family?
F M L A, family medical leave.
Yeah.
Are we subject to that? We are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's a labor department.
Yep.
Same. And yeah, and but that is different from family in them. F M L A just guarantees that you'll have your job back. Doesn't pay you while you're gone. The family leave is a is a way to get some sort of pay while you're gone.
Yeah, it does seem to duplicate what we already have as benefits.
I feel if the boys and staff are happy with it, you know, with what they have and. You know, white fixers just not burning. I mean, that's kind of how I look at it. Support of opting out of it.
And I like that if there is somebody that does want to opt into it, that they can. So it's not like. There was like four people that were like, I, we don't wanna do it. And then one person was like, but I do wanna do it. So they still have the opportunity. So. You know, not that I know.
Well, um. Want a uh? Resolution?
There's resolution forty seven.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion about resolution forty seven?
My my actually just make one clarification here.
Yes, Jeff.
Just wanna make sure that um, you know, last I heard, I don't think that the town had enough employees to basically be subject to the Family Medical Leave Act.
That's what I thought, too.
I just wanna make sure that we're clear that 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 I don't believe that's that applies to the town at this point. Yeah, you know, you're welcome. I just wanted to make sure that that we didn't have some misinformation out there. May- maybe the town has grown so much I lost track that I'm employees you have, but uh right now you're still under that, under that limit, I believe. Um, but that that, I mean, ultimately, I don't think that really changes things because. Based on the on this discussion, but just in case it it did make a difference for somebody, I wanted to make sure that they're operating on good information.
But someone like you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty seven.
Jacob? Is there a second? Second, regretting. Um, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion has.
May I make one more statement there? I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
And just so we're all clear again, I I do believe the town does provide benefits that are very similar. To F M L A leave on its own, even though the F M L A doesn't actually apply to the town, just so we're clear.
Okay, so we are. On with our business items. We have trustee staff interaction. I wanted to say one thing that we're, lots of us are going to um C M L conference next week. And if possible, it'd be nice if we could spread ourselves around and learn all kinds of different things and share with each other.
Yeah.
So um if you talk among yourselves, you know, when we're up there, most of the things you don't have to sign up for in advance. So if you just, you know, talk over breakfast or whatever and say, I'm gonna go to this, what are you gonna go to and. You know, just it'd be good if we could learn a variety of different things. So. It'd be good. Um, okay, Devon? You have anything for?
I'm good.
All right. Peter, it's your first time.
The.
Anything you'd like to bring up or comment on or?
So trustee staff interaction was is just bringing up random things, but pertinent to. Now, I mean, the only thing I was gonna mention at the beginning of the work part is. And I'm sure we've already talked about this in terms of like the lottery system or um housing benefits, but if. If we if we do move like the carbon all the way to housing, if there's where we can help out with. People retention or something like that, it it's like discounted or like a subsidized housing in some form. I think that's better use for child cares that would actually be able to recruit people to then run these programs and hold off them. In the, they got, we're going through there.
Yeah, thank you. Michelle?
I'm good. All right. Next, um, next meeting will be a budget adjustment.
Mark?
No.
Hold on.
Dana? Um, it was a, it was pretty nice to be able to go to the C B W commissioners community dinner. Um, this was a little wild, but now it feels like, um, but just meet some of them and talk a little bit about. There was a bunch of um bills that were passed that same day, so it was pretty interesting. And actually, some actually affected search and rescue, which is.
Oh, yeah.
Do, so that was kind of cool, just to speak on that, too, but.
What is C P W?
Oh, uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we have two kind of random things. Um, I got a bunch of email. Well, I should say a bunch, but a few. Um, just kind of like, these are questions slash heads up on. Um, what Slida is doing with their, this open door program. I don't know if anybody has seen, seen.
Heard of it. Can you tell us about it?
Um, so from what I've seen, essentially, it looks like employers um have the opportunity to recommend. I think employees and certain types of housing. I think there was even something that I read was uh. Finding land or space or people to even park campers and trailers just to find uh local employees that are. And you know, more options at home. So it's kind of like a visiting system, but. Um, but I can forward the information that was sent to me. I don't know if anybody else received that from people, but anyhow. Um, I'll share that with you.
Yeah, I'd like I'd like first to learn more about this. You know, like Dylan is doing it and.
There's just something that I think I'm saying, uh, just a creative concept to help me up with helping. Um, and the other thing, it's kind of random and I don't even know if there's anything you can potentially do, but. I don't know if anybody knows the post office hours have changed because there's there's a heart and. Bad there. I mean, they're working the fields off, but um I think now it's. It closes at two P M.
Yeah.
During the week and I think.
No Saturday.
Is it no Saturday or two hour? Okay. But anyway, I just, it's like, I don't, just wanna at least recognize that. Things are getting a little rougher there, it seems. And I don't know. I don't know what our ability is potentially to help, but at least wanted to bring it up. Anyhow, I guess that's all I thought.
Thank you. Cindy?
Um, I have a thing.
Good.
Um, for people that like the rodeo, the rodeo was just. As weekend, they had very big turnout and good.
Hundred and first.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Our work then, I would really like us to consider if there's. Any type of childcare preschool that it's year round. Um, having three months off is not helpful to parents that are relying on. So I think that needs to be year year round. And my other comment was. That El Grande subdivision.
Mm hmm.
Was approved by the county on the thirty first.
Right.
So what does that do for us in protecting our source water?
That part of that approval is contingency on. Fine with everything that's in source water protection plans.
So don't. But heads with the county or.
Well, it's it's kind of like approving something with a lot of contingencies. You hope it happens.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, we will have to sign off at the end. But it is putting a burden on on town to review everything that's coming through.
That's true.
So it is. And there will be some some time and resource put into that, because it will involve engineer reviews. It was. Just the, it wasn't a fine. Not that that doesn't relieve our burden, um but it wasn't a file.
Okay.
And and Sean was at the meeting and voiced.
Yes.
Administrator, perfect.
Um, Cindy remember her, so that was my, that was my to do, remind her of that one.
Oh.
No, that's all right.
Hey, so you're sitting to the left of Philip, so.
Very good. Uh, nothing here. Thank you.
Okay, Joseph?
Uh, no, nothing here.
Hey, well, I have a great challenge for you all. Hello, um, there's a car show on July ninth. Downtown, fancy, have everybody has their cars parked. And there's a mayor's choice opportunity. Somebody could take this opportunity to to make the mayor's choice. I don't know anything about cars, but. You can make it the trustee's choice or mayor's choice. Any takers? It's July ninth.
You wanna do it?
No, I don't wanna do it.
No, you can choose a car. I faith in you.
Take a cool coat.
Yeah.
So it looks cool, so.
All right, you get to take it home.
Yeah, that's part of it. You get to ride around town wave.
Let me know if you change your mind. I think that's it.
You need to come down there and look at those.
Oh, I love to look at them. And it's fun to look at them.
Um, I guess there is one other, the um envision request for contribution.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know how much more or other angles we need to look at that. Um, I do think that with the sales tax. Exceeding our budget in first quarter in combination with a pretty healthy fund balance. Um, seems reasonable to me.
Just do the twenty.
To increase our budget from ten thousand to twenty thousand, but. Do that too many times and then you start creating problems for the budget. So I, you know, I don't wanna minimize that ten thousand dollars, but it seems reasonable.
It's an important us to, you know, just, we're back to that question of. Not whether we're gonna have a fire sometime, but when.
And it is the area that the board requested that they.
Uh huh, yeah. Um, does anybody wanna make a motion about that?
I'll make a motion to. Put the line item.
Um, fire, wildfire mitigation.
Wildfire mitigation line item from ten thousand to twenty thousand.
Is there a second? Okay, we got a row and Jenkins. And uh, we'll do a roll call. Trustee Carter? Yes. Trustee Hilton Hinka?
Yeah.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee LaCretti?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Excellent.
We'll still look for a grant, but.
Yeah, sure. Um, is there one more motion that anybody wants to make?
Make one for the jury.
Very good. All right, so you have Row and LaCretti. It's meeting at the jury.
Don't we have to vote on?
No. Oh, yeah.
What if anybody never said no, but I want to keep going?